Okay, Commissioners, your meeting is live.
Morning, welcome to the October meeting, Raleigh County Commissioners, please stand and vote for the Scott Greenmark.
I'd like to say this we do the plan of the United States of America in a hearing public for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hold for just one moment, I'm not getting any sound registering. There we go. Very strange.
Fine, do you have some comment? With Commissioner's comments.
Well, Monday afternoon, that's a great time to stay a little tight. They discussed some county-related logistics operations as well as some future concerns. A lot of questions were asked and answered in the dialogue with, as you probably would imagine, that might be getting around to each and every one of you as well at some point in time here in the near future. Also, on Monday, attended the October meeting of the Policy Board of the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization. After some opening welcomes and remarks, we had some public comments section followed by a financial update from the MPO. We also got a staff update from both the MPO and KDOT. Some action items included approval of the August and September meeting minutes and Amendment Number One of the 2026-20 through 2029 transportation improvement program. Had a world discussion to discuss the Connecticut 2050 Plan and its projects and financials. Also discussed the 2026 UPWP Plan and ended with an executive session dealing with the planning managers' compensation. Also on Monday, I came over early, voted on the upcoming municipal school board elections. Quick and fast as usual, want to give a shout out to all the election workers, seeing the process once again amazingly easy. Believe all these elections are extremely important, so before we get out, cast a ballot through whatever various ways possible before and up to November 4th. Also, I was downtown, I went over to the office to check out the new windows. Absolutely amazing, a real game changer. They were putting in the very last of the windows while I was there, so looks like they're way ahead of schedule. So kudos to Baker McMillan, BHS, and Manco Windows for all the hard work and effort there as well. And I guess barring remodel of the door chambers, we might be in there a little bit earlier than anticipated, so even better. So Wednesday afternoon or I guess yesterday, came down, they had senior center, made a blood donation with the American Red Cross. It actually been spiked sometimes, it's actually had the chance to donate, but certainly was glad to do so yesterday. Important, always in need, most of the blood donations, the new app as well as the rapid pass system they've put in place makes the process so much easier and went well as usual. Last night, I moderated a city election candidate forum over at the city of Ogden. And we had eight of the nine candidates for the city council election to answer questions and give their thoughts as to why they are running for the council. And had a pretty good turnout from the citizens themselves for Wednesday night, I was kind of surprised. They did a good job, had some good quality candidates. Citizens are going to have a tough choice to make on the November 4th for sure. Then, of course, this morning, I attended the policy breakfast, so this is by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce at the DoubleTree. Guest speaker was Dr. Richard Winton, current president of Kansas State University, kind of went through some things. All case state, that's all I've got for this one.
Okay, well, Monday, after our meeting here, I went to the law board meeting. There are a lot of things on the agenda, we cleared it up, one of them, one of them being the group for the Agueville road closures have come to an agreement, so they were happy about that. Not exactly what the citizen, the business people wanted, but it's going to work. So, and then later in the evening, I met with Jacob down over in Keats Park. We did some door-to-door, tried to find people that needed to sign their easements. And we found not too many people home, but we talked to a couple. There were some questions on the easement that were going to get cleared up. And we found one lady who hadn't signed terms, and we sat and talked to her for a while, and she signed terms. And she came in, then they came in and did the permanent one, is that right? Or you went back out again?
We went back in.
She had two, she had a temporary, he went back out there, so we got that one. And, you know, so we're slowly getting people and figuring out what to do. Anyway, let's see, Tuesday, I was supposed to have a CEO team meeting, and it got canceled, so I was kind of... Kind of, what do I do now? Anyway, I had a doctor's appointment and did a lot of reading, got a lot of reading to catch up on this week. Wednesday, I went downtown also, I was downtown, I just stopped in to see Jacob in his office. Are you going to move, are your windows going in your spot or not?
Yeah, I think, I think we're anticipating I'll go back next.
Oh, okay. Good, yeah, well, then the fire, the fire just finally got remodeled. That should be all the moving that we got, so. Then yesterday evening, I did bell practice, and then this morning, I also went to the policy breakfast and covered it. So, that's all I have.
Well, also Monday, same noon, we had the law board meeting, and as mentioned, the big thing was hopefully senior Agueville and Bronx PD can come to an agreement on how to handle those things. Tuesday was the construction meeting for the new fire, the model. The building permits been issued and demolition is moving along. Completion date is early in July. Yeah, a few items we saw that we discussed. Contractors did process some different changes, we looked at, but mostly about paving. Wednesday was the add-of-us board meeting. They had some route changes of sort of a number of people, and we start in January, the details will be announced later this year. Ridership's up 6% from last year, which is good. And 2026 is the 50th anniversary from the start of that year. Well, it said they're going to have some activities to wrap that, so. It's been, and I don't, did it, we when it started, I thought it was age, wasn't aging transportation in Florida, I thought.
Yeah.
It was aging, now it's very transportation, but it started as a seniors thing.
Yeah, was it the city, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah, the city, and then they transferred to Dallas.
No.
Yeah, there's several, there's several, and they just ended up being on, what you say, asked, we just used some length, there's still.
And that's all I've got.
Great business measures, reverse item, motion approved, monitor agreement, and construction. Right-hand transportation tipping floor and chute repair replaced.
We're going to make a motion to approve the contract agreement with NF construction for the transfer station tipping floor and chute repair.
We moved and seconded to approve contract agreement with NF instruction for Raleigh County Transfer Station Tipping Floor and Chute Repair. On favor.
Aye.
Carefully signed. I'm going to go to the last, bringing that we have stat.
The Deputy Commissioners, a motion to approve cereal mall beverage license for Stagglewell.
I'm going to make a motion to approve and sign the cereal mall beverage license for Stagglewell Golf Club.
Second, Beth.
We moved and seconded to approve the cereal mall beverage license for Stagglewell Golf Club, on favor.
Aye.
Surely signed. Next, Commissioner, a motion to approve requesting employee action forms for Dan Linky, the name R, child care provider, health insurance, or officer of a health nurse, health department separation service.
I would make a motion to approve the requested employee action forms.
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve the request for employee action forms, on favor.
Aye.
We signed. You change the minutes first?
Didn't mean to.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 20th meeting of both Raleigh County Commissioners.
Till second.
We moved and seconded, we moved the minutes of the October 20th meeting of Mayor.
Attorney General's letter, commissioners. Any topics, I'm going to express them. Now, you have a little, the minute is nine thirty.
Another guy, very, and I'm looking at, you know, Beijing.
Online, and we should sort of, keep some options out of it. To be, or, or somebody.
Yeah, well, somebody has to, yeah, but that is, I mean, it's.
Good, good.
Yes. But I'm going to, you say, I'm on the way.
There's a little, it's actually your, it's like, you come there and, so.
And, and, yeah.
There's no, I feel we don't need.
Second, we was, yeah, you know, I feel that's a difference.
That's pretty, I think, that.
I mean, maybe that's a pretty, well, and then that issues, it's not like most time culture, it's not this tonight. And of course, if Andy's bad, it's, yeah, but it's just how we're young and, so what, we don't, so, um. I think we have a much better than what happened. And you're.
I say lots, yeah.
You're true, right?
I love it, making those choices, yeah, it's just, it's, it's, really, she said, yeah, I'm crying. Well, yeah, that's.
That. Yeah.
I'm gonna miss you. Yeah, I was seeing that people, I was.
Those.
Pretty cute.
Sure.
Have a set of.
Well, it's.
It's very, so I have a dream in the rest of the period. And there's only one of them.
My building.
Yeah. Beyond paint, so there's two of us, like, and order it on.
So maybe that's. It's not, it's just, yeah, different, so you're talking. Um, and with something appropriate.
Probably. Um, mostly soda.
Awesome.
Bubbles.
Okay, that looks like.
They just really want some.
Some.
Or some peaches and then coffee.
Right.
We can accept.
Coffee?
Yeah.
Like, cold coffee?
Well, like the soda.
Bottle coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is good, because then I can take all this data, and just put it into a chart and send it to my star, and say, okay, look, now we have like this, and I got, and did you drink?
Uh huh.
So. So.
Good.
Well.
Six months. Yeah. Eight minutes.
Oh, okay.
Important duties of God, listen.
Oh, no, what?
Important duties. Figuring out what breaks.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, so we went to that training, um, at E O S, and they have nice, new machines, and they had great drinks, yeah, great snacks, but. Like, it wasn't just sugar, you know, they actually had healthy snacks in there too, and. And I had to say, how did you get all of this stuff? He's supposed to ask for that. They'll send you a whole list that they can order from.
Definitely.
And so I was like, wow, okay, and so.
All the idea, that's.
Yeah. So I asked them for the list, and they sent it to me, and then I sent it to our whole building, and sent it to Jana, and to her next door, because they had one.
Bye.
Everybody put it through this, and so now I'm just. Putting it on paper finally, trying to get, see what happens, and hopefully get us a new machine upstairs and see. You need a whole machine, I get that whole support. Yeah, the, the, during the long, um, they don't need bottles.
So.
So I see. The bottles are actually. Yeah. One of the things that I don't.
Cool. This all, we're just walking around that way.
I did.
Right intention, just trying to open up some redesign, this is going to be. He didn't turn in the. Yes, middle.
Oh, really? That surprises me.
Yeah, I think, but it worked with the trainer. The social, but they didn't respond to it.
Oh, really?
But he's done a lot of work on this building.
You said something, John.
Dogs.
I don't know.
Also. That other. That's all does. Yeah.
Yeah, I did a project with Bruce on this building. Forty years ago. The entrance.
Just. About me to.
Now, I was saying the front entrance, if we did something.
Entrance.
Yeah.
Full of this.
I believe that one, it's awesome. Which isn't an entrance no more, but at the time, that was the entrance.
And I.
Yeah.
You already been for.
We. I mean, we've been there. It was, I did, but it's been a while.
And that's about all I got. Do that after the first one.
Okay. Well, I would.
It'll.
Good. Good morning, Commissioner, Ron Ellerman, Public Works. We're here to talk about this morning, the. Another stage in your building strategic plan is. Um. As E M Emergency Management and Fire moved out of their space in the C P E. Uh, the plan was to remodel that area for I T and G I S. So we've got today is a proposal. From Mike Baker McMillan. To. To do that design work, um. Around seventy eight thousand eight fifty. As long as we keep a. Construction costs under control, um, somewhat, but. They've got the proposal for them to do that, um, if you so approve. Some of the ideas we have in there is remove, taking all the network and server equipment over to that building. Um, to do so, we need to add a generator. To that, and then adding HVAC and air conditioning units for the server room, um. They have dedicated one and a backup for that, just in case, so.
Would those air conditioning units be in the window, so?
No, no, there'll be rooftop units probably out there on the.
Okay.
I don't know how they're designed yet, but they're not window units, no.
Good. That's our last one.
Then, if you folks approve that today, then we'll get with Bruce, we'll come back with a. A standard contract. That we can do to begin doing that project for.
Hmm.
More step.
And just another one, yep.
Yeah.
Lot of, lot of parts going on right now.
Yeah.
Um, well, I would make a motion that Bruce proposed for Baker McMillan, seventy eight thousand, eighty seven dollars. For the I T G I S remodel project in the C P E.
Been moved in second, you have approved the proposal from Baker McMillan, so seventy eight thousand eight hundred and fifty for the I T G I S remodel project, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay. So, next step, I have, next thing I have on there is elevator project change order. Um, this change order came about as soon as we wanted to start, as they got all their materials in. Had to increase in materials due to, they call it tariff increase, so. I put. We got a change order for you to sign, and then a. A breakdown of what those costs were and what the increases were. Not as bad as I expected when he called and told me that we have a problem or an issue, but, um. Nevertheless, it's still a little increase in the contracts that we pay the increase in. Cost of materials as they. Change throughout the project, so. Cost was eleven thousand four hundred and eighty five dollars sixty four cents was the increase.
What's for both?
This is, it was the total for all three.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay. Let me make a motion to approve change order, uh, number two for the elevator modernization project. For the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and eighty five dollars and sixty four cents.
I'm sorry about.
Move in second to approve the change order to for elev- elevators, modernization project. For eleven thousand four hundred and eighty five dollars sixty four cents. All favor of.
That's decided. Into.
John. We hope.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce. Brandon. Here. We are busy late, we have, we wish the best, nine fifty. Different.
I'm only to tell you that, um, man is going to be coming for one of you. So if you have anything good, you want to.
Oh. Okay.
A lot of stuff I'd take.
You know, that is.
Well, I mean, we, you know, some. We are. In this special case, this stuff.
So, that's probably what's. We probably have, because he said he's done.
But then, commission, then.
Yeah, it's off to mission, too. So, I don't know. They start drinking a lot, you know, it's. Where it is. He's.
Getting one more red, that's what I asked you.
To, there's a.
Oh, no, there, we, we didn't change that. And it's not even that, of all, it isn't.
Yeah. To, to, I think, to Carol. He's cheering on my. Okay, season, you didn't tell us. But we. I said, wait, she, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, there, yes, the sort of these, here. Even ones.
There's mayor. They switch this.
Just like this.
Hmm. So I'm gonna switch back. And. Can't say it right now. So I'm, uh. I'll talk to Karen, see what she is, so. But we need another. Your face.
I'm just, I'm just looking at election, that many people, nothing, it's many.
I made your. I know who I know.
Oh, I didn't, I, I didn't have it. And three, for me to piss.
Two, huh? No, is it?
Brandon, Brandon. You got to go to cheese game, you got to cheese game then.
Yeah.
But actually. That's. Without. I. Yeah. Maybe you'd rather.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's. There. It. It's there. Yeah.
We're staying in. I was just. Trying to. It's you, I didn't, well, I was like, just kind of dead, but another. It always happens. So it. Pretty much. We lock in, split the hands. Twice when it was. Yeah, I think I've been, your expenses. Don't turn that, care what the word was of us. What was, it was on. I have, I can be there at the time. And definitely. We're, we're on, we're released this week, and I didn't, don't see him, like, he's. Oh, did you? I don't know, yeah, yeah. Anybody's feeling. Oh, we can see it, we see it for, yeah. First, we remember that too, with Marshall Stewart, I just thought it was a good conversation with Marshall.
Okay. Good. Thanks, he comes.
Yeah, well, his presentation was pretty good. With the, what's that, it's only one of those. Me, and, so, thanks for that, I'm never gonna leave role on any one of them. Now, he had, files, just, just, well, they let it. They let this, nobody knows. Something just will happen, something will be, yeah. That can't ever solve it. And I, and online too, yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, excuse me, yeah. Well. So when you're going. But then we be here. That was, as we got, I got over twenty one thousand. Almost one. It's good.
No.
It's real, yeah.
How well is it?
With your. Oh. Yeah, very honest. I know. Wish I would've slept better last night. Yeah, all my explosions, yeah. Oh, you know, it was over in Longham last night for candidates forum, I mean, they were rocking the community center, but there's like, whoa. Yeah, oh my, yeah. You know, sounds of freedom.
Wow.
Sounds, it's been bad, you know. It's been part of, maybe if I still said it here, they've been last beat, I. Yeah. We didn't get. They're, they're, they're rocking the house, I see. Jack, if lunch has had a whole rule of resolution, engagement, firing at night. You'll get, all, all war writing is supposed to happen during the day? Yeah. Yeah. I'll tell you.
I mean, that's why it doesn't like, look, it's really, it's really.
So, okay, it's, uh, it's made by here.
Yeah.
Obviously, nobody's seen Danny Brothers, I guess. I've seen that, too. Yes. That's just. Jerry, huh? I don't know.
Well. Yeah. Please. It's. Because you're all, and you're. Um, if you're going to be listening now, and if you're. Nice, pretty good. Yeah. It's all. One. Hmm.
Five. Really, yeah. You can sell that.
Having it.
Yeah.
I can. We're ready. The, uh, the audio, she'll say. Then, her. Oh, I, I, it's, we, okay, literally, so you can have, you can, you can, you can, like, first, it's soft, you can, so, you know, I, I, it's, 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 it's. It's. Yeah. I'm not. We're gonna, we're gonna, this is getting us out.
Uh huh.
So, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, this is, I should, I should, I should, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to. So, you see, I mean, you, you, you. It's like, this is, so, so, we use, probably, you see, I, 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 I. No, over, we, we, that's, we, we, uh. And then, when I, 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 I.
Go for it. Uh.
We have to solve, you know, some of these people, that we found, probably, you're somewhere, I don't know, they're in this, breakfast, or things, there, they're, 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 they're not getting good.
No.
That's all they are, they're, they're off, all the number. It doesn't, yes. We're making progress, which is. Sometimes that's the only way to do this, because.
Yeah. See. Just one of them. Well, but you're, huh? Yeah.
We got a couple thousand.
These time accounts, then. That's something typical.
Hmm.
Unfortunately.
Me.
It just, it's, it's, it's.
Morning Commissioners, Vivian Leva, Public Information Officer, uh, with your monthly communications update. We have to start out our web stats for September twenty twenty five. We had a total of uh circa almost fifty seven thousand total page views, which is a little short. Um. We're typically in the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range. September is a shorter month, but uh we're looking at trends over time. So this is nothing to really get alarmed about. Uh. Treasury's Office, Fentanyl opioid awareness, popular pages. Those are our top ten. For the month. Yeah. Social media stats, um. Raleigh County government has just over four thousand two hundred followers, emergency management about fifty three hundred, uh. Raleigh County Fire nearly forty eight hundred and EMS around forty two hundred. Uh the Health Department remains our largest audience at twelve thousand uh six hundred. We do see some natural fluctuation, especially for the Health Department. Most. Built during COVID, so it's just kind of tapering off as uh. Uh you know, engagement was just unusually high. Back then we did our. News, our live news releases, and sometimes it feels like it was a long time ago, and sometimes it feels like it was just yesterday. So. Moving right along with those. So I do have a question for you. This is a copy of our mission statement, uh which is to. Ride quality public services that preserve the past, protect the present, and enhance the health, safety, and general well-being of the people in Riley County. I am participating in the highly effective managers program. And they talked in that session about the mission statement and asked people if they knew what it was. And one of the, one of our homework assignments was to find it. And uh talk about what it means to us. I thought, well. Let's let's make it a little bit easier to find. And I. Here's a, just an example. If we quit at the top of our attendance and ask an example of the bottom of the. I visited with Sandy to mention that it's this feasible grouping system. And I wanted to give you a idea of what it might look like. It's just a bit of a tax theater at the top or the bottom, or. He would. For anything like this to be there. But I felt I had enough info set and let the people know what I'm. And my. So. I must be free about that today. Because we are. Had added. To. Now, this is the one that you can go online, click the mission statement in the. Uh it's the same.
Yes. It's on.
I added it to the strategic. Um. There's a page of strategic cult goals that were created before I got here, so I don't know exactly what that is. But if you Google Riley County Mission Statement, it comes up with that page and nine strategic goals.
Also on the family.
Also on the personnel and procedures manual.
And it's in the Raleigh County Commissioners.
Manual.
To.
Okay.
That there's a link there to. Statement.
Yep, same one. So we can explore creating a new one if you'd like to go through that process and um.
Maybe. Issues. Yeah. Let's just rewind that back.
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah.
Thought.
Yes.
Not quite that. In what classification?
Yeah, well, if you put it on the um agendas, I don't know. It needs to be a little bit more prominent, but.
Okay.
I don't. It's a bold or whatever.
We can do that. We're large, a little more prominent or.
I'd give just leaving the agenda as it is and not putting it on there.
Okay. We are down to the the tiebreaker then.
Kind of. We're gonna put it. But.
You won't hurt my feelings.
I've been to that, you know, I. Think these things foolish to begin with, so that's my.
Yeah.
It's really generic, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not sure. Really means anything. Sorry.
All right.
Didn't advance, so.
Yeah, personally, this is what we got.
Places. It's not that hard to find.
I will.
Yeah.
All the agenda, the agendas, the items that we're actually discussing and a little, just I mean, I'm not saying it's of relevancy, but I.
Okay.
I'd rather the agenda just be about what we need to be about and. What admission statement? Go to the website.
Okay. All right, well, I had a fifty fifty shot.
Or.
Well. Yeah. Next. So this is um. Kind of in relation to the communications manual, which I've been talking about and working on. And it, you know, it feels like there have been a lot of changes lately, and I'm trying to be sensitive to that, so I'm slowing down a bit. Um. To keep from kind of overwhelming anyone where. I'm working with department heads on pieces of. Of the manual that I'm working on and proposing. And this is just kind of one um. Chunk that I wanted to share with you uh. To give you an idea of the kind of stuff I'm doing. I'm not just back in my workshop cooking up. Um crazy plans, although I I absolutely am because that's what I find the most fun. Uh. But just as we. Create mass communications or create uh information for the public, that we're considering all of the different audiences. And again, I have lots of handouts today. And I will try not to overwhelm you with that either. But I. Wrote down. Just a little chart.
Thank you.
As we're. Considering who we're talking to and by. What concerns different. Statements, although not that you might have, it's just something to consider. This is the kind of thing that I'm hoping to quicken the communications manual. So we have an awareness of who we're talking to, uh what they care about, what they need from communication, and what channels and styles work best for them. So I don't need feedback about this today. I just wanted to not give you a five hundred page manual to read in two days that you have to digest. So we're. We're teasing it out over time to give you an idea of the type of things I'm focusing on. What's that? Lots of stuff going on as usual. Another thing, a bandaid that I tried to rip off, um because I thought it might be one of the most uh painful points of getting everybody on board with. Having a unified presentation of what Raleigh County is and who Raleigh County staff are. And I just, I guess I like handing stuff out. So I presented to department heads at the last meeting. We talked about the purpose for having a standardized email signature. And then they chose this guy here on the left. And part of what I talked to them about, but I didn't want to just put on the. The president's slides as if that personal information was just to give a demonstration of the different. Email signatures that can exist in the organizations that close. Are written at size that both have. Currently, some are easy to read, some are not easy to read. Um they don't all have a unified look that says, okay, this email came from an employee of Raleigh County. And that's kind of one of the. The main justifications that I had for. Bringing us all together with a unified look. The second line are uh examples of email signatures from P I Os at different organizations. And the one on the right is kind of an extreme example of, you know, this is why we put the guardrails up because. You know, somebody's personal expression can be very um. Colorful and relevant to them individually, but not necessarily a professional representation of the organization. So. Um. I just wanted to share those examples with you. Do. Um and I plan to work with department heads to make adjustments if needed, and we'll give more feedback as always as well. Okay, that was the last of the handouts.
Can you tell the email signatures, where would they go? Just on the page or everything that they they do? I don't, because I I have a problem with email signatures in general. I would like to know where exactly you're going to use these.
Just an email. So as they they generate email messages or respond to email messages, this pops up at the bottom.
Okay, but it's not for signing documents or.
No.
It's just that. That's. That. And. And the.
The bottom.
These are your emails. It's not, it's not a signature related thing. It just identifies. Captain Fokie, County Commissioner Riley. With contact information. It's not something for someone to sign.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Not a physical.
Yeah, okay. That's. Okay, that's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Yeah, like nothing, nothing official, like.
And it was amazing. These little things like this, you get lots of. Uh backing work that he likes wet and everyone's pretty agreeable on this and.
Uh huh.
Like in that one, pretty simple. Say, yeah, let's just go with that one.
Okay. Okay. Um we had our, we started initial planning for the website refresh with Civic Plus. The goal is just to freshen it up a little without, again, completely redesigning. We'll keep our current colors and fonts. Update some of the photos and icons and graphics. And Cory and I met with Holly Brown to start the process. It should be fairly streamlined. And to keep up with content needs, my goal is to formalize a a website team and offer them training with at least one representative from each department. Who will be responsible for keeping the the text and images and links up to date on their department's pages, and that's that's coming down the line. Again, working on the communications manual, um been taking the highly effective managers course. The local emergency planning committee bylaws were approved at the last members' meeting on October seventh, so I will bring those to you uh to review. And hopefully approve formally, and we'll get those signed and in the books. Um I also plan to bring the employee day results, a presentation of how things went, what the feedback looked like. Uh we'll do that in cooperation with the employee uh development, employee day committee, but I'll be scheduling that. Um. ADA compliance is coming up. April twenty fourth, twenty twenty six is the deadline to have all those things in place. Um and the next intergovernmental luncheon is Monday. Uh the city of Manhattan will be taking over planning for the intergovernmental luncheons next year. Okay. Okay, um I also sent you an invitation for. A presentation from Dr. Matthew Layton on November sixth. It is on a commission meeting day, and he is scheduled to talk with you first thing in the morning. And then head over to the library to give his presentation, which will end with a public forum. I think it starts at one forty five. But if you are available for any portion of that afternoon, I encourage you to stop by. This is um. But the focus of the presentation will be on. You know, meaningful solutions to drug addiction and healthcare in the community. So it's a, it's a pretty big topic. He's an innovative uh. Kind of on the beginning edge of some of that innovation, so. And that wraps up the October update. Um thank you for your feedback on the mission statement. I will tell Cindy we don't have to make any adjustments to the layout. Um. If you, do you have any questions or feedback to share for me? Moving right along. Well, thank you so much, Commissioners.
Well, did. On that. You have government luncheon. The headline is similar. We know.
We do not. November is going to be the last one for the year. Yep.
Oh, that was right. November is the last one.
November.
November, November's last one, and it is the Monday before Thanksgiving. Um.
Yeah. Always is.
Always is.
Mm hmm.
Well, yes, it would be. Some years we skip it or have skipped it, but.
I think. But last year.
Some.
Well, that's.
Uh huh. And both topics are related to to case state this month. We have the panel of three, which I'm glad that, and I'm not going to remember his name, the director of the University Gardens. And um McCain Auditorium um will be there. And since they have such big plans for the University Gardens, I'm excited to see what he has to say. Okay, thank you very much. One minute to spare.
And I'm sure that the policy breakfast for next year's change.
Yes.
You eight AM and just coffee, no truck. So we may not have anything to participate in or not. If it's eight AM. That's. Uh I'm gonna be there and then get here, so just something to think about. Yeah.
What's next?
Whoever did that likes to sleep in. It's the reason for that change, but. There's no breakfast to God. I know.
What do we charge? This is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Today's presentation.
Yeah. Yes.
Some other.
You just. I go first. Ready?
All right.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner Jacob Hansen, Raleigh County Councilor here. Um before we get on to our district coroner agreements. Um just kind of a reminder that I'm planning on taking that week off following next week. So um that would be November, I believe, fifth through. However, many days it is. Um so uh well, I'll have Michael here for um starting next week on Monday. Uh and then I'm taking off for a week, so I will uh prep him, of course, and he'll be available to answer any questions in the meantime. And. Uh just kind of while I'll let you guys know that that's that's going on, and I'll still have my phone. So I guess if uh anything comes up, you just give me a ray and I'll do my best to answer. Um. Aside from that, I don't have really any other updates uh as far as projects go. Um. You know, as you hear from Catherine, uh we've been working hard on Keats and securing the rest of those easements. And uh you know, every day we get a little bit closer to. Getting them done. Um it's, we've had some actually pretty good success there, I think, and. People have been willing willing to talk uh and have a conversation, and it's 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 going well. So. With that, I will move on to, of course, our agreements here, district coroner. Um it was a bit of a unique circumstance here, uh and let me give some, I guess, background on why you have two agreements in front of you and why they look. Pretty much the same. Um and that is, of course, we have our district coroner, who is Dr. Susan Speaks, but we also have services that were being provided directly uh with Peterson Labs. And we had an agreement with them uh that they would provide services uh basically until the end of the year or a little bit past that. Uh they had like a ninety day notice, termination notice that they provided to us some time ago. So and that's because Peterson Labs was bought out by another company and they're discontinuing their. Uh coroner services or uh so in that. Realm, we decided that we still needed, of course, to have uh these services being provided at least till the end of the year, so then we can go. Through the district coroner process that's laid out in statute. Um and that's going to involve uh getting you some nominations from the local medical society. Um I've been in talks with uh some of the folks that are at least connected to that organization, so hopefully we can start building some uh. Um interest there and get some names in front of you guys. And we plan on having that wrapped up uh and presented to you guys before the end of the year, so that way. Once the new year starts, we have district coroner in place for everybody. Um so again, really, this the this kind of is more of a procedural contractual. Um. Uh mechanism here. Nothing necessarily is changing as far as like on the groundwork. Um we're really just, instead of paying to Peterson Labs and then pay to Dr. Speaks, we're paying directly to Dr. Speaks.
Hmm.
Okay. So that's uh essentially the function here and why why we're doing it. Um do you guys have any questions, concerns on the contracts? I should also mention, I apologize, I did include an email at the very end, if you guys seen that. And that was because uh for one reason or another, the page numbers. That were sent back to us uh from what Dr. Speaks signed um wasn't correct. It it. It was, it would say page one of two, two of two, and then it'd go three of two, all the way to thirteen of two. So the email that I sent to Dr. Speaks was just to clarify, hey, we were both understanding that there's thirteen pages total in this document. And we also clarified just the compensation to make sure we're all on the same page. So that's why that email is included in there, just to make sure, or you know. We all know what's going on.
Thirteen pages. I wondered.
Thirteen of two.
Thirteen of two.
What? Um. Are we looking at the R C B D was trying to get someone else to do.
Hmm.
Uh deeper investigations. Where were, where are we with that?
Yeah, so that's. Yeah, so that's included in this contract as well, I shouldn't, I should note, um, that those were specifically autopsy services, which is somewhat adjacent to the duties of the coroner. And so what we put in this agreement as well is that the coroner is to use, uh, I think it was like Cedric County, uh, autopsy or some, something along those lines, that they're gonna use those services uh, as the first option.
Yeah, okay.
And so, and I, and I ran the, the contract by Barry and make sure, and, uh, RCPD to make sure they were, they were good with that, so.
Um, but then we moved that the board authorized the chairman to sign the amendment and new agreement as presented.
I would second that.
And moved and seconded, include the amendment, then, oh, yeah, amendment number two to the coroner services. And the agreement for coroner services with Dr. Steven Speaks. All favorable.
Aye.
Play time for next.
Yeah, you got like fourteen minutes.
Okay.
And so, uh, Riley County was in contract with Peterson Labs, so it's, but, um, part of that would determine what you wanted. And it was a certain amount of age, and let's say, whatever something like that, they. So, they were all in that nomination, you know, um, well, it started, it was a little bit active. But in that, they also said, hey, so, we'd like to enter a interview that has intensive interest. Um, so, we, so, they, 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 just switched to the, even more delight, they didn't like the students, but we, we, we just switched beyond them. So, I guess I would really get some shit out of it. Uh, sometimes, yeah, it's well inside, like they're, uh, uh, so, uh. Yeah. You don't be term, I mean, I thought it was wrong, but, 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 because Dr. Speaks, the coroner has the district number for some time. But the way, all services were provided, choose utilizing Peterson Labs, Peterson, I choose, like Peterson Labs, so that they, it's kind of. Oh, that's, that's, yeah, so essentially, now, yeah, you have to eat just directly to it, instead of the Peterson Labs and the class base, or however they have. Now, the second try. It's, it's. How about that, yeah, Dr. She then is your coroner, if you're. Statute, that's, uh, number two, maybe. Two, one, it's just, just the office service, so, you know, you, I mean, the cell, you know, that. Great, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, so that it hasn't stopped, so that you can continue, here's how that, but that makes more. But, but you're saying. In role, I have to move to, um, all of them, I was gonna say, I just have now. They want to some of the, so that I can, I just, my, 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 for excess, I believe. Cut, that makes, I'm, I'm, so, I'm, I'm. So, you know, I was not to do specific information, but, frankly, my office, we were not too involved. Uh, the district, and, 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 uh, the office is, just, I'm betting that, I don't think, uh, the district coroner, because usually it's gonna be a connection. That, uh, the district coroner, I can start, I can start, I can, I can, I can, I can, I can. Was it, so, he said, yeah, that's, 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 yeah.
We got the time, it's, it's so it's a lot of things, but for me, like, I don't understand, so it's like, there's something something that watch, it's well, not sponsored, obviously, I mean, so the phrase in us, they come up and they broke or something. Yeah, so it's, you know how they all say, everything's something information, I mean the logic behind it, I can say, it wants to be effective, so we want more. I mean, they've, they've changed many times over the years, and I've had, and getting them to take without it makes me get to see it's just consistent. You know, we thought, well, three days, but he just that, and suppose for this amount of time. When we switch your, it just shouldn't be seen in agents. And then, yeah, it's, it's back in our age, yeah, definitely. It's just interesting, you know, actually, I, I have no need for it, because but I, but I they were very responsive, and we have, and we have was really responsible. Unfortunately, you know, what she did, yes, it's store people, even if they're not actually in house, it takes me out, I'm just if I explain it, very, so obviously, it's this is killing me. It was dangerous, it's, it's like it was on me, and I first time, yeah. This is actually all the that's it, so I can wonder, oh, that's very nice, they're I didn't, well, really, I didn't even see what I made, so but it was true, it was something
Well, you can tell it, then you can tell that it never came up. But it's just it's good, we don't say something but we wanted to believe, which is still yeah, it's just I'll give you the name right. We didn't know, we just if you're proud, you can do this. Just adjusting to each space. She doesn't need to do, I mean, you're sure you can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Seems tough, this is, much less, you know, anything that's, that's good changes. But all the people seems strong, being I could see those, and that doesn't it's your favorite, so should shut up, I hope it's gonna be a prank, or it's all well, it's in the that's, that's that's then who does get the best city? Sure, here, yeah, so, so, yeah. Right now, which I think, which is like, I said it's already, can't get some, there's a yeah, I really like it, see, so
They have, they assign someone